Ladies and gentlemen, we're excited to say that we're being paid to speak with him today. It's great honor. I'd like to hear the voice of President Trump in the audience. Very pleased to be here today, President. And I would like to thank the citizens of our people. And I would like to thank our government. We heard that he is going to do some things. Well, I'm going to chat it up. Of course, Dr. Wayne White said that we're going to do some things to help the United States. We do not think of all these long hours in the dark. But we're going to do some things to help the United States. We pay for taxes and taxes to the President of the United States. We pay for taxes to the President of the United States. We pay for taxes to the President of the United States. We pay for taxes to the President of the United States. But what you were ready to pay to the United States, gentlemen, I presume, for you, the best way of getting paid in the United States, the honorable Mr. Johnson.
Thank you very much. Marion Johnson, all of our state vision gets into this on the internet, mentioned Annapolis, mentioned downtown development. Marion Holmes is here with us. Marion Jones is the representative of the city on Atlanta eighty-eightth. So anybody that wants to know anything about the Democratic Party convention, where we're going to elect the next President of the United States, go see Marion Jones. I'm particularly glad to see Dick's delegation here. I think anybody that's interested in leadership, anybody that's interested in salesmanship, anybody that's interested in people becoming entrepreneurial, needs to go sit with Mr. Dick. Because Mr. Dick is probably the best salesman and the best sales trainer that I have ever met. And I've been in some big on-ramps and listened to the high powered folks. But if you ever want an experience, go along and take a sample. And you'll find out how people make their money, isn't that right? Now, I'm really thrilled that my term was there. I'm almost sorry my time is running out. But we just about, uh, we did six years, we got two years to go. And this is sort of a report card that tries to spell out specifically what has happened essentially to the black community. That when you look at the growth and development of the city, when you look at the fact that there has been during my term as mayor, forty-seven billion dollars worth of new investments back in the metropolitan area. When you think that that represents over five hundred thousand new jobs that have come in here, people have tended not to see that in relationship with the world. And people have tended to look at these big buildings and that these statistics on growth and development is not related to the world. But when you think that in the city limits, we've done two and a half billion dollars for specific construction projects, that we've issued over three thousand five hundred licenses for buildings, that even within the city limits, there's been close to fifty thousand new jobs. When we look at what we've done in the area of housing, we complain and write this up, that we really do have a housing crisis in this land. We need housing and we need housing desperately. And yet we've been able to spend about fifty-two million dollars in rehabilitation of six thousand five hundred eighty-six thousand units. We've generated about sixty million dollars in housing development in the West Side, in the building development market alone. And just recently, we've had two bond issues that offer about twenty-three million dollars that enable people to purchase some four hundred single family homes in this city. Vermont has also, that's the Urban Residential Finance Authority, has also put out about ninety-four million dollars for the construction and rehabilitation from another fifteen hundred rental units in this city. And right now, we have out forty-three million, forty-three and a half million dollars that's available for people who are first-time homebuyers to purchase homes at a nine-and-one-third interest rate. Now, the prevailing interest rate is about eleven and a half, twelve percent. Uh, if you, if you're lucky, you get eleven percent. We're offering nine-and, nine-and-a-third. What that means on a fifty thousand dollar house is that your house sold is seventy-five dollars a month a week. And that over the thirty-year life of a mortgage, you save twenty-seven thousand dollars by buying a house through the residential finance authority than going through the conventional source. And so seven hundred and twenty-five new bands are going to be able to purchase homes in the city of Atlanta. And that's homes that go anywhere from fifty thousand to something from thirty-nine thousand dollars to a target here. But it has to be the first time you've ever bought a home. And this is a program to encourage homeownership. And it's one that we had, really, we had almost a thousand people, like civics now, last week, coming to hear about this program. And hopefully, they will take up all of this money quickly. Because the sooner they take it up, the sooner we can go out and get some more. All of the things we've been able to do that helped save the citizens of Atlanta money and buy money that's guaranteed by the city and tactics that breaks that gets you about four or eight to point and a half to the point below the prime issue. Now, those are things that I think we're going to see in cities. We're just beginning. It's been very, very hard to get housing going. But I think in the last year to six months, six months to a year, we have seen a half a dozen to a thousand dollars come in with money breaking ground and beginning to build, build housing units within the city limits to the left. I think we're still going to make ten thousand housing starts. And at least a thousand of them are going to be located in our housing sector. And we're going to make that, that was my goal a year ago, over the last few years. And I think we're going to be at a reset that already in the stage of design and construction and looking for some of the final money to put things together, already we've got three or four thousand unit starts that we had to go in this and just begin. Now, the problem we face though, and the things that I hear, and from people on the other end, the thing that I hear from my brothers and sisters and their people, is the wonderful things that we're going to do. Well, I want to take just one project and begin to spell out some of the things that it means, it might mean for the people who work. Take that IBM building there with power going in now. What does that mean? Well, the one thing it means about seven thousand dollars to the residents, it means that those are good jobs. That in checking with IBM, those jobs are about twenty-one percent minority jobs. So that when we talk about IBM or AT&amp;T or Bell South, we're not talking about places where only white people. We're talking about job offices. And I would say that the twenty percent, the twenty percent of the new jobs coming into this metropolitan area are going to be blacks. What you're talking about is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand new jobs in the last five years. And I make the twenty percent as a conservative people, that their jobs available out there for people who are able to qualify. And the task that we have for us is to see the people to qualify. Every day, the IBM building needs a half million dollar payment. There's seven hundred and fifty people working on that tower. And every day, a half million dollars comes into this city through that one building home. Now, what does the President of IBM Corporation of that size mean for us? Well, one of the things that it meant for us is that we've become the laboratory for a lot of very creative projects. And the children in the Atlanta public schools, in every Atlanta public school, are starting out with a computer education in first grade. And I don't know that that's happening in any other city at all. But every city, every Atlanta public school has a computer laboratory, a little bit of first grade. And we've even gone further than that. In the daycare centers, we have a computer room where four and five-year-olds are teaching themselves how to read on computers. You go to that Georgia Hill Community Center, any day, and you watch these old four-year-olds, large hands, with their little workbooks, and sit down at these computers and put all their heads in and watch them writing stories and doing things that you and I didn't get to do until we went third or fourth grade and then we didn't do it on computers. But they are writing whole paragraphs at four years old. It means that the children, even of a forest of a bull, or in our daycare centers in the city, those are people who are working from, many of them single working mothers. It means that their children are getting an opportunity to start out with pedagogy with the rest of the world. So that if you're used to working with computers, since you're four years old, you don't have any problem getting a job where you're quite young. So I think as we watch those kinds of things and as we see that sorrowful, but maybe even farther worse, the, uh, we have the largest concentration of reading laboratories in the nation. Eighty-three reading laboratories in Atlanta Public Schools, which means that our kids are getting a computer literacy. And frankly, I'm still struggling with IBM trying to get me to sit down and look at it and learn how to work a computer, intelligent systems, given me a computer to use, uh, you know, and I'm nervous about this. And I, I haven't been able to take the time to get comfortable with the computer. But then when I go to all of our schools and I see our four, five, and six-year-olds moving into computer world, I begin to realize that I might be able to do that too. We also have the house book, which we're using in our prisons and which we're using in a number of city workers. This is a program where anybody who has any kind of reading difficulties, and if the national averages are correct, we probably have almost a thousand people who are employees who really don't read and write at the sixth grade level. And what we're saying is that now you can come to one of our adult literacy laboratories and you can teach yourself on a computer to read and write and move to the place where on a computer. You can take the GED High School equipment, see that's it. And we've got people at all ages in the back. We found that what happened, many people working for the city got jobs because they didn't have any way else to support their families. And they dropped out of school when they were very, very young. And now they have very bright people. There is still some of our best workers who have even become syllabists, who have difficulty handling written orders and writing out instructions for employees. And we're finding that with people in city government, we are willing to pay them overtime to come to school half an hour in order to improve themselves. And in the process, they will be doing the same thing that I'm doing, learning to handle a computer and learn to be able to function in the kind of world that all of us are going to have today. We also run this program experimentally in our city prison block. So if somebody in jail or needed help weeks, they can have access to computers to teach themselves. And we can work with people even in prison. Because we find that in the Georgia prison system, three, four percent of people in the prison system are not able to read and write. And you can naturally make correlation. And one of the reasons why they are in the prison system is that they've not had an opportunity to acquire the skills and enable them to keep on standing. But when you get to these young people who are coming out of our schools, we're finding that we're able with the help of our ability, to train people to move into these computer programming jobs. We also have a magnet high school down at the Southside High School. So that any of those young people coming out of Southside High School can come out with a certain facility dealing with word processing and computers. That saves the money, saves money for us. We've had, we've lost about six hundred and six, sixty-seven thousand dollars to take the hundred and twenty-three people that are trained. That's what it costs to keep them on open. As a result of training, they are able now to put back in the vehicle, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. And the net gain of confidence with all of their training is that we're a million five hundred fifty-five thousand dollars richer because about six hundred people got off welfare and got on jobs. For them, what it means is that they are now making an average of nine thousand dollars a year. And they're so employed, they're, they're, they're working, they're paying taxes, their children are in these daycare centers where their children are learning on computers and are guaranteed an opportunity to compete in the kind of world that we live in. The IBM company has loaned executives to any number of our students, both at the grammar school, high school, and university level. So that their loan executives are giving people the kind of job insurance. Now, what I said about IBM, I can almost say in another way about Georgia Paul, about Bell South, about AT&amp;T, about Public Board, about Rich's, Rich's Academy, uh, that is taking some of our students who have dropped out and who have, uh, not done well in our public school system, giving them another chance. All of those programs that I think are coming about because of the kind of total sense of management that we are developing in this community. And I'm confident that we're going to go on and be able to see that gold in the world. I look around and I see that in spite of all this, we still have a long, long way to go. And though we have come a long, long way, about all that we've been able to do is demonstrate that there's almost no problem in our city that we can't solve if we put our attention to it. Now, that amount of money coming into our community, how do we keep that coming to future generations? Finally, the only thing we can do is make sure we have the best public school system available. And I think we're moving in that direction. And I'm frankly very pleased with the new superintendent that's been appointed. Because I think he will continue in that tradition to keep us with one of the better school systems. That school system right now, sixty-two percent of all the kids in the school system is ninety-six percent black and seventy-five percent white. And yet sixty-two percent of our kids are going on to college each year. Another thirty-three percent are going either into the military or in law. And the five percent are so that we're losing. Essentially, we're losing the deep brackets. Uh, and we still have some problems there. We don't want to lose anybody. But I think we see that the opportunities are here. So that whenever people are willing to work to take advantage of those opportunities, it's possible to make a good life. Years ago, in Atlanta, I had a young lady come to me about three months ago, saying that she wanted to go to college. She did very well, um, in high school. And, uh, my daddy was trying to get her a scholarship to Fort Valley. And I said, well, she wanted to know, did I know anybody in Fort Valley State that could help her get a scholarship? I said, no. I said, I know some people there, but I know Fort Valley doesn't pay very much money. If you don't mind going to a school that has a lot of money, uh, I'll be glad to try to get you a scholarship. She said, I'll go anyway. I just want to get a college education. My secretary picked up the phone and he called Littleberry College in Vermont, which in most of that, most people would say is one of the top ten smallest universities in the country. Littleberry gave off a full scholarship. And that would normally cost about fifty thousand dollars. And she's got a full scholarship there. And Littleberry was so impressed with her, she's only been there two months, that already they have sent their recruits in to interview some more of Atlanta high school students. Because they want some more of our students to come up there and they're worth the pain they're allowing them to pay. Every year through the Dream Jam Parade, we bring in about two hundred colleges like Littleberry. And we take every one of our high school students through that Dream Jam Parade. And when we started the Dream Jam Parade, Atlanta high school students were averaging about two million dollars in scholarships a year. For the last three years in a row, we'd averaged better than ten million dollars in scholarships. One year, we went up to fourteen million. Last year was a small class, we still got about fifty million dollars in scholarships. That's dollars coming to people who are poor. So I think that while we haven't solved all of the problems, now, I don't think that I haven't said anything about all that happened. Uh, but while we haven't solved all of the problems, we've been bringing money into this community as fast as we possibly can. And we've been distributing it as well as we can to the people who need it most. And we're going to continue to do that. I think the first six years, we were still trial and error. We were experimenting. We basically know what works. And I think there's some things that we can do in these last two years. In fact, it's possible that we can do almost as much in the last two years as we've been able to do in the first six years. So I don't think of myself in any way as laid up. I'm trying to develop the agenda for the future so that whatever mayor has to leave, there'll be so much going on and so many things that will happen that the next mayor will be able to keep it forward. Because yes, just as the previous mayors laid a very good foundation for it, I can't make credit for all this. And you got to make, give the airport credit to Mayor Hartsey. And Ivan Allen built the stadium and started the expressway. Slav Mcello started the Mass Frantic system. Fane and Jackson implemented the new airport and began to bring the affirmative action program up the road. Uh, where twenty-five percent of all of our city contracts go to minority contracts. The last few years, we've gotten that up close to forty percent. So that's going, all of that's going to keep going. But in addition, I think that many more things that we still can do. And I would hope that we will be able to keep on keeping on. Because despite of the fact that we've come a long, long way, we've still got a long, long way to go. For everyone that has a job, for everyone that's going to college, there's still too many that are left behind. We've got to bring along our brothers and sisters, whatever color they may be, uh, whenever they come to us to give a hand. People who grow up here, I think, have a good, wonderful opportunity. But there's some people that come here who don't. Bring problems with them from any other place. We're going to have to deal with that too. Because we've got to make sure that the Atlanta experience of growing and developing is an experience that can be shared on all of us. And that we continue to set the direction for how cities are going to be for years to come. Because we have learned to live and work together to grow. In spite of our differences and in spite of all of the problems and disagreements that we might have, it's still good to be mayor of Atlanta and to have all of you as our constituents.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Mayor Young for his presentation and all the peace and harmony that he has started, all the love that the mayor has, and that you feel, that you should, that you're proud of, that you should, you know, it all, the way you support, that you should, please, always give, and give to the, and the state. I would be able to have certain, uh, questions that you can ask me. Definitely. I think anytime there is, I think it will be a good thing. But I'll say, but let me say about that, that, um, the grand jury process
But I'll say. But let me say about that, that, um, the grand jury process is the process that basically has to determine what happens to these officers. We have all the procedures underway in the police department and the civilian reform committee, which are going to determine what's going on. Frankly, if I had listened to my good friend Jose, uh, had done what he wanted to do, able to guarantee that he's office with a good state of the game. And the only way you're going to get something done about these officers, if it, if it needs to be done, is to take the time to do it right and document it very carefully. And that's what we've been trying to do now in the grand jury process. The officers and the witnesses have an opportunity to sit down to go. And just like the grand jury's office on all of the citizens, I mean, yes, of course. All of the citizens sitting there will have something to say about it. Now, on jury trial, only one person can declare you innocent if you're innocent. But in a grand jury, it's a majority vote. And so if the vote is divided, uh, if the majority feels that should be indicted, after hearing the evidence, then they, I'm sure they will be indicted. I don't have any idea what they're hearing. I don't have any idea what's on the grand jury. But I do know that, um, the grand jury process is one of the avenues that we have to go down in order to ensure that justice be done. And that's basically what we've been trying to do. Let, let me say that our police department, you know, one of the problems I see is when I talk to white folks, they think the police department is all black. When I talk to black folks, they're looking at the police department as all white. The truth of it is, I think the police department is about fifty two percent black, forty eight percent white. And in every zone, it's a race relations workshop. Because if the major is black, captain under him is white. If the captain, I mean, if the major is white, captain under him is black. And we have tried to pair up our lands so that in every decision, there is a racial balance. And every night that that breaks down, it probably broke down where I was stationed. I was dragged through there for ninety days or so, um, because that racial balance broke down. It may have broken down in relationships with the government, uh, but overwhelming. We have worked to establish racial balance and to ensure racial justice out in the city. And we'll continue to do that. Well, let, let me say that, that Almond Avenue is in a struggle largely because there's not enough private money coming in. And versus we can put in government money, if there is private money coming in also. We probably put as much money as we can legally put into Almond Avenue and continue to do that. And one of the reasons we are trying to do that is because we're trying desperately to preserve the historical integrity of Almond Avenue. Now, let's be honest about it. Almond Avenue has never been owned by a white person. Almond Avenue has always been mixed ownership. Uh, and we're encouraging black entrepreneurs to acquire as much property as possible. Uh, and, uh, and we're trying to help people like Mutual Federal develop the property that they have acquired. As Mutual Federal develops that law, I think we can see that Mutual Federal, its minority owned operating, continue to function that way. Uh, but we're going to have to come up with a way to develop the businesses and upgrade them. Uh, and what the city is trying to do is put in things like marketing, uh, that can make it easier for people to come down. I think the presence of a state market, uh, near Almond Avenue, the market that goes to that, the available things that make, uh, I think that we've got minority entrepreneurs that, uh, we're probably working with, but we're jointly working on the Odd Dollar Building. Uh, I have said a number of minority, anybody that wanted to put any money into Almond Avenue, we guarantee a certain number of city offices, uh, going into Almond Avenue. We gotta find a way to get some money put into Almond Avenue and get some people with some money living and working down there. Uh, and, uh, I would hope that we can be able to do that. And that's a difficult story. Well, he really didn't say that. I don't think he even applied for that. Because I think that the grand jury investigation is an investigation to see whether there are any problems there. The city investigation is to see whether or not any of our procedures all have been violated. And, uh, actually, they're, they're both going on because they have done. Both grand jury investigations, the head, the head, the car was available, the prime commission was available. Uh, both was out, was available, uh, and neither could our municipal office. Now, I don't know when we will have a judgment from, uh, zero professional standards, the law is a criminal standard. But I suspect that one is going on independent of the criminal investigation. And that just because the grand jury decides one way doesn't mean that the law of the professional standards doesn't going to decide the same way. Are these the two independent investigations? And it may be that they could follow or work out criminal activity, uh, offices were criminally hired. Uh, but that still may not mean that they, uh, live as far as the Atlanta police proceedings. We hold out with a very, very high standard. Well, let me say, I've met with some of the students in there. And I think that we won't be able to work out some of the problems related to the state. But I, I like the state and I think it's basically because I think that the major employer in this city is the convention industry. The jobs related to the convention industry are not eighty one thousand jobs in our city. I would be willing to estimate that most of those jobs, the hotel jobs, taxi driver jobs, have most of those jobs that are black. And that when we increase the hotel occupancy by ten percent, uh, that's another four thousand jobs. Uh, it's the, it's the thing that has made the city in recession as we have been for sixty, seventy, eighty. And I think that a large convention, uh, like the Baptist community of fifty thousand people, we had thirty five thousand P and D's. Now, those kinds of meetings would be heavily involved, uh, and I think they would create the kinds of growth and development that could be compatible. Now, I've been told that, um, Alverna, uh, would not be relocated, does not have to be relocated. Rising Star has already got a building for Miss Colby as our church. Uh, so they're gone and they're counting on some residents from the state to help the state with their church. There are not many houses on the east side of North Side Drive that are going to be relocated. Uh, like, I don't think that any, uh, that's mostly a railroad yard. Now, with the land across on the other side of North Side Drive, on the lion city side, I think you can probably count on a hotel, a hotel going up there on that eighty. A Morris Brown that's owned for some years to help hotels. Uh, and given the presence of the stadium, I can see Morris Brown getting a major hotel name to help them go into a hotel suite. Uh, nothing much along North Side Drive, although the west side of North Side Drive, that's a bit. Uh, I think we can define that activity related to the stadium. Uh, from, uh, North Side Drive back to downtown. Now, the question still hasn't been resolved in the paper. And I'm not finished with the city in the paper. But if there is a private sector that's going to come up with seventy percent of money, the state is going to be involved in helping to deal with the problem. And even before, we had talked about the stadium. I had talked to Tom Horr about trying to get a North Side Drive tech to be able to go on through so that they can have some connection, uh, so we can have some access downtown, uh, from I twenty. Uh, and so those plans have been under discussion in the Department of Transportation, of all of study. We still have not had a commitment, uh, from them to do it. But I'm, I'm assuming that, um, the discussion in the paper the last couple of days, that the state, Department of Transportation, uh, would probably need an agency that can help that burden, uh, any strength for, for those estate groups. Uh, if it can all be worked out, I think the state is the thing. We're not trying to run roughshod over everybody, anybody. And we're gonna do everything we can to protect everybody that's in the neighborhood, also protect the interests that we have in the presence of Old County Stadium, Atlanta Old County Stadium, and the guarantee of ours that we have over the hump. All of these problems have been dealt with, but I think the commitment, we've never had a commitment of this nature. This much is important. We've never had this kind of commitment from private sector. And as long as those commitments are there, I think it's important for me to work along with it. Uh, to see if we can solve all of them. And I hope that Trump did solve all the problems. And I think it would be a real asset to, uh, to the whole nation. I, I end up, and I was now trying to make decisions. An old Indian proverb that says that we don't have to make decisions, it's seven generations yet not one. You don't always see all the information in those decisions, but for the long view, helping Atlanta to remain the number one convention center, uh, to go along with some of the other times that both have developed different rights. Uh, is I think, I think it's important for the citizens of Lion City to have those jobs. Senator Johnson said, you know, one of the major employers, uh, over at Somerville is Atlanta Old County Stadium. Uh, and, uh, and, and also, I think those are the kinds of details that we would have to work at. We would have to have, uh, some understanding about the government guarantees, about the kinds of job opportunities that we want to enable people in the community. Uh, and we're going to have to solve the problems of all of those churches. Not just the large hall and drop, but the churches we have eyes with. Well, I think the Braves, uh, as I've called for Stan Cast, the Braves just feel like they have left out of the discussion that it's all going on around rankings bit and felt. And, uh, they just want to be a part of the discussion and they happen to pose. Uh, and, uh, the, the stadium is small for being a non-teen. Uh, it may not ever happen, but there's enough, there's enough to pick me. Uh, they, the Barrett are taking the good part. One more person maybe, one more. No, I don't think, I don't think so. I, I think it was just one of those accidents, uh, where it was on, on the job and what. I would not say that, no. Well, yeah, but I think if you're looking at those three things, basically what you're talking about is an individual security pattern, which is probably established pretty well before they get home. To be kids who are so insecure and vulnerable and ill and needed, that they are vulnerable to drugs and pregnancy. And really, that's the kind of thing, and I say anytime I preach in a church, that's one of the creatures of the teaching job. And you men better start hugging your daughters and kids when they go and die, you know? So that they not starve for affection when they get fifteen. Uh, and I mean, that's, that basically people who are vulnerable emotional, uh, are people who get pregnant, get hooked on drugs. And so giving our children enough emotional security before they leave home, I think is a major feat. Now, that, that's why I would put that word before on our churches, on our families, than I would on the school system. Uh, but the school system, I think, the, so the school system can give you information. People don't get pregnant, don't get drunk because they don't, they, they do it because they're not emotionally strong enough to stand for drugs. Uh, and so giving them that kind of emotional strength. Uh, I think one of the things that's going on here, uh, the YMC has always done a very good job of dealing with the young men. And recently, one of our turners started having teen workshops for teenage boys. Trying to help them realize that their manhood, you know, is not tied up in their ability to get pregnant, get some girl pregnant. That real manhood revolves, involves being responsible, uh, for female partners and entering into mutual relationships where you can live and work and grow together and raise a family that you can be proud of. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, audience, for your participation. I'll back thanks to you and the Congress next week. We're just starting up in that, 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 we'll be in.
Positive. Test twenty-five, um, say sexually active gay men, and you'll get a higher number of false negatives. The test will say they're negative, and then if you go to find the actual virus in their body, you will find the virus in their body. Those are called false negatives. So there are false negatives, there are false positives. What the percentage of them is, is debated. Depends on what study you read, depends on what side of the political aisle you're on, depends on what agency you work for. Uh, all in all, the test is a very, very good test, and it, the Lysa test, and it is an excellent test for screening blood. That's what it was designed for. The area of controversy comes when you start using that test to test human beings, when you use it for screening of employees, or you use it for screening of, for instance, right now, the military has decided to test all military employees. Starting September first, at least within the Air Force, thirty-four thousand people will be tested every month. Those samples will be sent to the, to Arizona. That's where false positives and false negatives come in. Also, in the area of, uh, people will be accused, in other words, of being positive when they're actually not, and that's very, very dangerous, and it's also a legal problem. Um, the problem of pregnancy comes in, um, with the fact that, uh, women who are pregnant, with their hormones and their, their, uh, bodies and adjustment for the pregnancy, tend to show more false positives than do non-pregnant women. Um, the state of Georgia almost passed a law last year requiring all pregnant women to be tested for H L V three. This te- this law may come up again, and we fought it, and other groups fought it, as being medically and clinically unsound, also being a social and political nightmare, um, because of the false positivity, for one thing, and as a law, we do recommend that high-risk group women, uh, women who have had sex with bisexuals, women who have had multiple sexual partners, women who have had sex with men who have done IV drugs, that their pediatrician prudently should test them, because if they are positive, their babies are gonna be positive. Sixty percent of all babies with AIDS in America are black babies. That means that in this community, and at Grady Hospital, and other public hospitals, young teenage pregnant girls should be tested, but they should be tested at their own consent, with consent of their doctor, and not by a state law. Uh, the false positivity is one of those reasons. The other reason is that when you start making it a state issue, uh, you bring in other social factors, which could be very, very, uh, dangerous, we feel, in the society, um, which we probably won't point to this morning. But, um, the, um, the, that's probably what they had to do about the pregnant women, is that they, they have showed more false positives than would, uh, non-pregnant women.
Thank you. For Mr. Walker, a series of questions. How did your children respond when they found out you had AIDS? What is your present, current physical condition? You look healthy, are you undergoing any medical treatment?
Uh, yes, my children, uh, my son is ten years old, and he's taking it very well. I think he does not truly understand about it. The rest of the people in my family know that I'm gay. I married my wife as a gay man, and she married me knowing that I was gay. Um, my daughter is about sixteen, and it's a little bit more difficult for her because she's trying to get her values, uh, together in terms of a lot of things in her life. And so I think she feels embarrassment because now, uh, everybody will know that her father's gay. Uh, but we are working that out. We are talking that out. She's telling me her frustration, I'm telling her mine, and through it all, I think we are holding together as a close-knit family. But it is difficult. Um, I feel that I'm healthy, I think the key thing in it is God. I have found that people who die quick don't have no faith, neither in themselves, nor in a symbolic form of God. They don't have faith. But if you have faith, you can sustain any suffering. It tells you that in the book. You can sustain anything, endure anything, 'cause Jesus got up on that cross and He came down. Now, you may have trouble believing that, but you might have found the religion that, that, that makes you whole, that make you feel good. And I think based on that, that is the key thing. Yes, I am also taking medication, 'cause I'm not an idiot. You, it, life is, is spiritual, physical, and mental. You gotta work it all together, it's a package. I'm taking isoprenazine, which is an experimental drug. At, at the present time, I'm also trying to get, um, ribavirum, which is not sold in this country. I think it has made a difference in terms of my stamina and my strength.
Thank you. Another question. Does the Red Cross notify the CDC of positive people?
Uh, not as a, um, a routine matter. The CDC does not take keep statistics on numbers of people who are positive, but, um, it does keep its own records, and, uh, as this, at this conference in Washington, there were many, many papers presented with statistics, uh, on, uh, who is positive in blood donor groups. So the statistics are kept, they are available, you can call the Red Cross, and they'll tell you, give you a report every month, uh, but it, they're not particularly, uh, it's not part of the CDC surveillance program.
Just a question for a clarification from Dr. Bland. Would you reiterate your connection? You identified yourself, other than maybe totally what you are?
Okay, once again, I'm with the Georgia AIDS Project, which is, which is a unit of the Office of Epidemiology for the Georgia Department of Human Resources. What my office does, we're involved in surveillance, uh, and doing a little bit of education in conjunction with some other state agencies, uh, to educate the people of Georgia about AIDS.
Thank you. Uh, to either Dr. Bland or Mr. South, if one million people have been infected, how should we deal with the trauma of that, potentially of that? Should we worry at all? Double-part question.
Well, yes, we should worry, because, um, the fact is that once a person is infected, they're infected for life, and that this is a sexually transmitted disease. We assume that in the city of Atlanta, there's a minimum of twenty-five thousand people infected today. Now, those twenty-five thousand people, uh, if they're all sexually active, and they all go out tonight and find a partner, that means fifty thousand people by tomorrow. Uh, so, and they're infected for life. Now, we don't know, um, how many of those people will eventually develop AIDS. Right now, we're saying about twenty to maybe twenty-five percent will, will eventually get, uh, ARC or AIDS. We don't know over the long haul what will happen to people who are infected. We know that there will be separate, uh, groups of people who will, by just having an infection, will get what's called dementia and, uh, brain infections. We have a number of people now who are in their thirties and who are Alzheimer's patients, basically. Their brains, um, are completely infected with this virus, and the drugs that we have now don't cross the blood-brain barrier. So we are looking at, um, uh, some substantial cases in the next, um, in the next five to ten years. It also means that the million people that are now infected, uh, unless there's a, um, a miracle drug very quickly to be able to, um, um, to be able to kill this virus off, again, they stay infected the rest of their lives. So they are capable of infecting people the rest of their lives, they're capable of infecting their babies the rest of their lives, and the possibility is that they will end up getting either a brain infection or getting an AIDS. So, uh, being infected, being positive, is not any, um, benign state. It's a very serious state, which means that we need to do all we possibly can to stop the spread of this epidemic. One of the concerns about this epidemic, and as you probably know, AIDS is one of the most politicized diseases that's ever been in this country, and one of the problems is the debate between education and testing. There are those in our government who feel that the way to prevent this epidemic is to test everybody as fast as possible, that if you know your antibody status, you will stop having sex, you will change your sexual practices, and you will, uh, that will stop the epidemic. It seems to me, and to most of the AIDS groups, that logic would say it would be better that people don't get infected first, before they get tested. Why wait until everybody's positive, and then test them and find out who's positive and who's negative? Let's put money, m- energy, and resources into education so that people don't get positive to begin with. That's part of the reason for this program here. Um, according to, uh, the National Institutes of Health, by nineteen ninety-one, two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand cases of AIDS could be diagnosed. Right now, we're talking about twenty-five thousand have been diagnosed, talking about the next six years upwards of two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand cases. That's just AIDS. You can multiply that by ten to get cases of A R C. So, um, the, um, it is a very serious matter of infection, and, um, as I said, we are talking about a minimal amount of twenty-five thousand people in this town who are infected today, and that number could double in the next year very easily.
Thank you. For the Claims Division, should a correction officer searching a prisoner be cut and contact AIDS? Will he or she be eligible for workers' compensation?
I think we heard earlier on the film, and through some of the other comments that were made here, that, uh, the likelihood that a relationship like that would develop is infinitesimal. Uh, so basically, there's nothing to worry about, um, that, that a relationship like that is gonna develop. But to answer the question specifically, we examine every injury, we examine every, uh, source of every injury, and if there is a relationship between any disease and working on the job in the city of Atlanta, um, yes, you are eligible for benefits, and you will be taken care of, uh, although the possibility of that happening is extremely, extremely remote.
Thank you. For Mr. Hall, sodomy is illegal in Georgia. Will city employees who come down with AIDS be reported as criminals?
I don't know. Now, I, I think it would be incumbent upon us to protect that patient, um, so long as he or she is able to work. I don't think it is incumbent upon the Law Department, or the city, or any department, or any employer working for this city, to be an informer. Therefore, I, my, off-the-cuff answer would be is, no, we would not seek to the prosecution of anyone who contracts AIDS through sodomy. It would probably, uh, get to the penal, uh, officers eventually, but not through the city of Atlanta, I feel certain.
Also, a question from Mr. Hall, and then partially also for Reverend South. We have heard about the little boy with AIDS in Indiana. Could you please explain what is currently happening with that situation, and whether the same situation would be treated the same way in Georgia's school system? Directed to either or both.
Okay, as for the situation in Indiana, um, and as for how it's handled here, in Georgia, our policy is to handle each case as an individual. We will go in and we will investigate, and we'll find out exactly what's going on. And if there is no reason for that child to be in school, uh, if there's, that he should not be in school, the child should be allowed to go to school. That's, that's the ruling here in Georgia. That's how we handle those situations. We investigate, and we make sure that, um, there is no danger to other people in the school from that individual, and vice versa. And we also do a lot to try to educate school officials and concerned people in that area as to the facts, and try to help them out and make things a lot easier for those individuals in that problem.
As far as I know, there is no state law prohibiting, or insisting, in either way, that a child be disallowed, or be forced to go to a school if he, he or she has AIDS. I know of no such prohibition or, uh, mandatory law.
The question, again, to the law, Mac Hall. Since Georgia has passed the law making sodomy an offense, and of course, been sustained by the U.S. Supreme Court, how can the city of Atlanta openly recruit homosexuals knowing they're going home at night and committing sodomy? I don't know that you've already responded to that question, but someone in the audience has posed that question.
I think we need to remind people about what the law in Georgia says. Law in Georgia says that the definition of sodomy is the, uh, mouth and anus of one person and the sexual organs of another person. It says nothing about gay or straight, it says nothing about married or single. Anyone in this room who has ever had oral sex in their life is, is a sodomite, and is guilty of committing a twenty-year felony. Chances are, every member of the police force at some time in their life has committed sodomy. So every member of the police force is guilty of committing, uh, every politician, uh, has that has committed oral sex on their wife, or anybody else, is guilty of committing a felony, according to the law of the state of Georgia. So we're not just talking about homosexual activity. Um, the Supreme Court law is something else, the Supreme Court decision is something else, um, because I upheld this archaic law. But the law is here, and hopefully, there's lots of sodomites in the audience. And I hope you enjoyed it.
Thank you. Markey, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to make one comment. That is the issue, that the person who asked the question in terms of, in the daytime, and then when you go home, you commit sodomy. But I think people need to remember, every black person in this room was three-fourths of a citizen until the Constitution was amended and had no rights. So therefore, it is good that we bring the issue to the table, and we resolve this once and for all.
Mr. South, we have another question, and Dr. Bland. Uh, the question is, explain the difference between ARC and AIDS. It seems to be some misunderstanding about that.
H L V three infection, infection is on a continuum, and, um, at the top of that continuum is a diagnosis of AIDS. In order to be diagnosed with AIDS, you must meet the criteria that's set up by CDC, which basically says that you must have an underlying immune deficiency that's not caused by any other means, and that you must have one of some specific opportunistic infections, mainly carposisarcoma or pneumocystis pneumonia. In order to have those, be diagnosed with those diseases, you have to have a, a very serious kind of diagnostic test. When a person has one of those two opportunistic infections, which are diagnosed, they then have AIDS. Nobody else has AIDS but people who are diagnosed. In this town today, there's about a hundred and eighty-five people, like Markey, who are diagnosed cases of AIDS. This morning, we had another person on the panel. Uh, Dennis is an A R C patient. He has AIDS-related complex. There are some five to six thousand people in metropolitan Atlanta that have this condition. It's also caused by the AIDS virus. People also get very ill. They have fatigue, they have diarrhea, they have, um, fevers, they have night sweats. They also can get certain types of opportunistic infections. People can die from A R C. But because they are not, they are not, fa- do not have these two specific opportunistic infections, pneumocystis pneumonia or carposisarcoma, they do not meet the CDC criteria of AIDS diagnosis. Therefore, SSI and Medicare use CDC criteria for diagnosis of AIDS as a cutoff point for who gets Medicaid and who doesn't. People below the line of these two opportunistic infections are not eligible for SSI, they are not eligible for Medicare. So we have basically in Atlanta now, about, is it a hundred and eighty-five people who have AIDS, who are, who are eligible for medical benefits, and about five to six thousand people who have A R C, who are not eligible, and yet may still die from A R C. About forty, forty percent of the people with A R C will go on up and get AIDS within the next year. It's ironic that people with A R C become relieved when they're diagnosed with AIDS. It's a, it's not a blessing, but for them, it's a way of at least knowing what's gonna happen to them. People with A R C live in a very gray area. They can get very sick and die, or they can live like they've been living for a long time. Many of them are disabled and can't work, but they still are not eligible for any kind of benefits. So that's, that's the clinical difference, and it's also a, um, uh, societal problem in that there's no, what it means, though, uh, for benefits, is that we're saying to, to Health and Human Services, they would have to increase the Medicare budget tenfold in order to take care of people with ARC. This is not the time or place or administration to talk about increasing the Medicare budget. We can't get basic Medicare, uh, for poor people as it is, let alone increasing it ten percent, tenfold. So it's a very, very difficult situation.
When a person is considered for employment with the city of Atlanta, they are given a physical by the Fulton County Health Department. Does this physical include the AIDS test when they do the blood work?
I can answer that, and it does not, and we have no plans to include that.
General question for Reverend South. The population of Atlanta... The population of Atlanta is 250, 2,500,000 people. How many of these people are at high risk to AIDS?
We look at it like this. There's, um, of 2 and 1/2, 2, 2,200,000 people in metro Atlanta. The two high, largest high-risk groups in metro Atlanta are IV drug users and gay men. Uh, bisexual men are also high risk, as well as sexual partners of IV drug users and bisexual men. If you look at the fact that there are 750,000 adult males in metro Atlanta, if you take just 10% of that, which is very, very conservative, and consider them gay, that's 75,000. Then you take IV drug users, which are estimated by the IV drug treatment people at 25,000. That makes 100,000 people at high, high risk for this infection. Then you add to that 6,500 gay adolescent males, 10% of adolescent males in our schools. Adolescent males are having sex with boys and girls. They are at high risk for this epidemic and they are getting little to no education about this disease. They are the cases of the 90s. Um, that makes 106,500 people at high, high risk, which doesn't include bisexuals and does not include sexual partners of all those people. So that's where we get our 25,000-figure form of infection. If you look at sister cities of Washington DC and of Houston, they are around 30% infection of high-risk group members. We're being conservative and crossing our fingers and hoping that we're only at 25% infection today. So that's where we come down with 25,000 people infected. We say to gay men, um, as they go into a, a gay bar, look around the bar and count off fours. Every fourth person's got the virus. You make your choice. And we say to IV drug users going into treatment and to IV drug staff, you look at your staff and you, you count off every third person, every fourth person has the virus today. If they're having sex with women, if they're having sex, most of them are men, if they're having sex with girlfriends, with wives, they are spreading the virus to their girlfriends and their wives. We need desperately to have a better prevention program for incorrections and in our IV drug treatment programs to get to people who are using IV drugs. The bridge and the big fear seems to be, how fast and how much will this virus get out of the gay community and get into the heterosexual community? That is happening and will happen, and it will happen through the IV drug community because they are the bridge between heterosexual and homosexual. And those people are bisexual as well. They have, they have two ways of passing the virus. They have sex with each other and they also pass it by passing needles. People who have sexual contact as gay men only can get the virus one way. IV drug users can spread it two ways. So we need increased education in IV drug community.
Another question for the Law Department. If the city is not concerned with what city employees do on their time off from the job, why were city firemen given urine tests to check for drug usage?
First reason is because, uh, drug use shows up in the, uh, body, uh, I'm told, for days and days after use of the narcotic. This could affect performance on the job and thus your safety when that fireman comes to your house to put your fire out. This is a fairly standard thing done, being done all over the country by all fire bureaus, and it'll probably continue. And in, since this person seems to, uh, this enquirer want to provoke, uh, by that question, I'd like to add that many cities are now requiring AIDS testing for job applicants and specifically penal systems in a variety of states are not only testing for AIDS, they are segregating AIDS patients, and the courts are upholding, uh, those choices, those activities by those various governments.
Thank you. For either Dr. Bland or Reverend South, is a person with an incurable disease more susceptible to AIDS than an AIDS patient is to his or her disease?
Not quite sure what you mean. I mean, a person who's already has a terminal disease, would they be more susceptible to AIDS than someone who's healthy?
That's the way I, I read it.
Oh, sure. I mean, that, that's one of the problems is that a person who already, that's why, uh, anyone who's in a high-risk group needs to very, be very careful about their immune system. Our immune systems are very, very fragile things, and if alcohol use, drug use, stress, uh, all these sorts of things lower your immune system, and you end up being a sitting duck for this virus. We don't know why it is that some people who get, get exposed to the virus get sick and other people get exposed to the virus don't even get the virus and don't get sick. We don't know why that is. And one theory is, which is logical, is that some people have better immune systems. And if you have an impaired immune system, um, you're bound to be open to more infections. So obviously, if your immune system's in bad shape and you come in touch with the virus, you're, you're in a lot worse shape than someone who is in good physical health. Though I have to say, this against myself, there are plenty of cases that we can document, uh, where people have been absolute health nuts, who have been monogamous for eight or nine years, who have run, jogged, not overweight, don't do drugs, all that sort of thing, eat lots of brown rice, wonderful people, and had gone out once, cheated on their lover or whatever, got infected and have died.
For Reverend South? Predating 1981, how did AIDS get into the United States and with whom or what did AIDS originate? I'm sorry, Dr.?
I'll just say a little bit about that, pass on to, to Dr. Bland. Everybody's very interested in the, um, in the origins of AIDS. All in all, it's not particularly our interest, whether we know where it came from or not, really doesn't affect the fact that we've got people dying today and we've got people that are going to die tomorrow. Um, it is interesting, and people who do epidemiology are very interested in all that, and sometime when somebody's going to write an encyclopedia, it'd be important to put it in there, but, um, it's not all that important to how we prevent the spread of it now and how we treat it now. We know that it is a new virus, and we know from frozen blood samples that we can isolate the virus going back a certain number of years. Right here in Atlanta, one of our internationally-known virologists, Dr. Andre Namius, has isolated HIV-3 infection in blood, frozen blood samples from Zaire as far back as 1959. But when you go back to the blood samples, 1958, 1957, 1956, you don't find any infection. That's as far back as, as I have heard and seen in the literature. Um, with the incubation period of such a long time, that's why we didn't see cases until 1981. It was clear that there were cases, full-blown cases of AIDS in Africa, in Central Africa, long before they were here in the United States. Um, the Haitian connection is a big question. Nobody knows why, how the connection, it's clear that throughout the rest of the world, most of the spread has come from the United States, but how the virus got to the United States is a big question. What the connection is between Central Africa and Haiti, between Haiti and the United States is a big question, there's lots of theories about it. But we do know that the virus is isolated, uh, in Central Africa going back as far as 1959 and not isolated in the United States going back that far.
There are several theories as to the origin of the virus, and it's depending on which school of thought you want to go with. Um, I, like Reverend South, prefer not to go into those because a lot of times they end up offending people, and rightfully so, because in actuality, some of them do offend me. Um, I think the major issue with the whole thing is that it's here and let's do something about it.
I have read and heard on TV that family members of AIDS victims to date have not contacted AIDS. Is this information accurate? Please explain.
Several studies have been done in conjunction with CDC, um, dealing with family members of people who have AIDS and are living in the household, um, through daily household contact and practices like sharing the same bathroom facilities, drinking out of the same glasses, using the same cups like kids do, even to the extent of using the same toothbrushes. Um, it has been shown that these day-to-day contacts do not in any way put people at an increased risk for AIDS.
Thank you. I guess to Reverend South, since AIDS is a communicable disease, why doesn't the CDC track down the contacts as they do for venereal disease? Dr. Bland?
Okay, it's interesting, and we get that question a lot. Uh, the problem with AIDS is that it's such a life-shattering, totally, disease. It shatters your life personally, socially, financially, in every way imaginable. Um, the procedure of contract tracing works great with venereal diseases or diseases for which you have a cure, but there's no cure for this disease. So why trace people down and label them saying, well, you have this disease, have you been exposed to this disease, when you're not really sure that your accusations are true? And subject them to a life-ruining situation that they don't really need. So, um, contact tracing only has benefits of a scientific nature, and the, I think the, um, social nature of contract tracing far outweighs the scientific benefits of it.
The other part of that is voluntary partner referral, and CDC has been recommending that, and Aid Atlanta and the other AIDS organizations have been recommending that it's a, it's really a moral obligation, that if you are positive, you know you're positive, and if you know who your sexual contacts have been, and if you know where they are, and if you ever see them again, you have a responsibility to notify them and for them to go and be tested. Um, but that's a very unrealistic possibility for, for most people in this country. Uh, for most people who are most adults who are sexually active, that's a very difficult task to do. You're talking about multi-millions of people trying to find multi-millions of people.
One other question from the audience. If AIDS virus came from Africa, if we, if you do have any idea of the statistics of death and illness there, please give them. And at the present time, wouldn't you have seen people from Zaire dying and millions?
Okay, the spread of the virus is, uh, a bit different from the way it here, is here in this country. There seems to be a heterosexual spread of the virus, which for reasons unbeknownst of the, this time, is not completely understood, that there's some connection and something to be learned from that. Um, AIDS is a major problem in Central Africa. As far as quoting numbers, I don't have any available. Um, it is a major problem there, and, um, um, as far as the virus goes, it's, it's just a real cloudy situation, it's still under study, there's not a whole lot understood about it.
Question to Dr. Bland or Reverend South. What practices, what sexual practices are unsafe? I and my husband practice conalingus and fellatio. Are these safe?
Couple things. First of all, as far as the couple's concerned, as long as they have been truly monogamous for the past seven or eight years, and the husband knows where the wife has been and the wife knows where the husband's been, and they have truly been monogamous, then they can basically do whatever they like. Even though what they might do might be a committed felony, but at least they can, as far as, as far as clinically is concerned, they can do what they like. And that's the same for gay couples as well. Um, if people have been truly monogamous for the past seven to eight, nine years, they can, um, rest assured, some people like to get tested, but they can pretty much rest assured they don't have the virus, as long as they stay monogamous, they can practice whatever practices they like. There are, however, for the rest of, the greater majority of people who are not monogamous in this country, um, there are certain sexual practices that, um, that increase the spread of this virus. This virus is found in blood and semen. It is true that the virus is found in minute amounts in vaginal fluid and, and saliva and tears. The fact is that that is not a very good method of transmission. This virus is transmitted by semen and blood. Anytime that semen, infected semen goes from point A to point B, an infection can take place. Doesn't make any difference whether that's a heterosexual relationship, a homosexual relationship, a bisexual relationship, an adult and a child relationship, um, it doesn't make any difference. If there's infected semen traveling from point A to point B, there's going to be an infection. Now, there are certain ways that that, that semen can infect a person easier than other ways, and that's why there are certain particular, um, sexual practices that are more risky than others. The most risky sexual practice there is is anal sex. The rectum was not designed basically to receive semen, and yet it was designed to have, to absorb moisture. So the blood vessels are very close to the wall of the mucous membranes of, of the rectum, and, uh, the vi, the semen therefore can very easily enter the bloodstream. Mucus membranes are designed to receive things easily into the bloodstream. That's why we take nasal sprays up our nose. It's why some other people put other things up their nose, because it goes directly to the bloodstream. If, um, same thing with, with the rectum wall. So therefore, anal sex without a condom is the most risky sex there is for contacting AIDS. Oral sex is also risky sex, and it's risky not because, um, of the semen getting into the stomach, because hydrochloric acid will kill just about anything that gets to your stomach. Um, but it's because the semen will get into your mouth, and you can have small cuts in your mouth, if you've brushed your teeth, you have little cuts in your mouth. If you eat an apple, your mouth is bleeding, though you can't see it, it's microscopic blood in your mouth. So, um, oral sex, there's the semen itself from ejaculation, and also the vesical fluid, uh, that supposedly arrives within six seconds of an erection, uh, also has the AIDS virus. So just saying to somebody, well, uh, a person is safe because they don't ejaculate is not necessarily true, because there's HIV-3 in the fluid as well. So, um, we recommend as safe sex practices, all anal sex, all oral sex, uh, that condoms be used, for anyone who is sexually active in America, period. Um, the, uh, those are the two highest-risk behaviors. Others are, um, are more specific and are for lot smaller groups of people, but those are the, those are the two most specific and the most dangerous. That's why we recommend condom use for everyone. And now, that's a big problem, because, uh, we have a lot of, there's a lot of barriers and blocks to prevention. My understanding is from, uh, Aid Atlanta has contracted with a local condom manufacturer in North Carolina, who told us that there's been a city ordinance for years that said that they couldn't get condom machines into the city. They've been trying for years, there's a city ordinance saying you can't have a condom machine in a public place. Um, we had to check that out. As I've been looking around town, I have not yet seen a condom machine in a restaurant bathroom, uh, or in gas station bathrooms in town. Um, we need them there, uh, as far as I'm concerned, we need them in our high schools. If we're going to be serious about stopping the spread of this disease, we need to be serious about condom use for all sexually active people. And that's not popular, and people don't want to talk about it, and people don't want to acknowledge the fact that our teenagers have sex. But if we don't do something about it now, our teenagers are going to be this AIDS cases of the 90s. Um, so condom use has got to become more and more popular. It's a brand-new idea to gay men, and it's been very, uh, difficult to introduce condom use to gay men. Um, most people think of condoms as birth control. They weren't even designed as birth control, they were designed as venereal disease stoppers. Um, but to introduce condoms to gay men is very revolutionary. They never had to use them before. They never worried about birth control. Uh, and if you go to the Kroger and look at the condom packages, look how they're marketed. There's always a nice little young lady, a nice man walking down a beach. Uh, they're not even marketed to gay men. So, um, it's a whole new avenue, but we've got to, uh, be doing it and we've got to be serious. We have no, we have no vaccine, we have no cure, we need to be doing safe sex, and, um, that requires a serious commitment on city, county, and state, uh, policy levels as well as in our schools. We need to be doing, we need to be doing sex education in our schools. I don't know how many of your children get routine sex education in their schools. It's not a popular subject in some school districts in the state. Uh, if we're serious about stopping AIDS, and if we're serious about stopping unwanted pregnancy, and if we're serious about stopping STDs, Georgia, by the way, is second in syphilis in the United States, and third in gonorrhea in the United States, and 10th in AIDS in the United States. And we're supposed to be a Christian Bible-fearing state. Somebody's having sex out there.
Thank you. What I'd like is, we've got about eight and a half minutes left, and I realize we have not exhausted by any means. All the questions would encourage the people here in the audience to stay around and ask questions of our panelists. And also, after the program is over, you may call directly and get further information about AIDS or safe sex from your family physician or by calling Aid Atlanta at 876-9944. And there's also a hearing impaired number, 658-6187. I gave the wrong number, somebody will correct me in a minute. What I'd like to do is, starting with...
Could I add that the Georgia Department of Human Resources does have an AIDS hotline, and you can also call that for information, and the number there is toll-free all over the state, and the number is 1-800-551-2728.
What I'd like to do is start with Mr. Dixon from the Claims, Safety, and Health Department, and then go to his right up the panel, and if you have any comment or summary statements, you've got about a minute apiece, if you would.
I think the significant thing to city employees related to on-the-job health and safety is that our best knowledge indicates that we're not at high risk on the job, so we're going to continue to carry out all the functions providing city services, and we're not putting our employees in high risk to contract... we're not putting our employees in high risk to contract a, any disease. Um, we do examine every occurrence of any kind of injury, and if there is any relationship to the job, uh, we are very humanitarian, and we're very responsible about dealing with whatever our employees, um, contract.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
I was not expecting to be, you to call me this way, but I think I can safely say that the city's position, and, and the city is my client, will probably be to, uh, show no disparity of treatment toward any AIDS patient, uh, any different, to treat him any differently than if he had, uh, any other very serious terminal disease. But we will look at them on a case-by-case basis, depending on the nature of the claim that is filed by that employee, and whether or not it, "it" meaning the claim, should be paid, honored, and that employee pensioned, or allowed to have leave of absence, or, uh, whatever he may seek, he or she may seek. So we'll just have to take the cases as they come up on an individual basis. But I feel certain there'll be no discrimination against anyone with AIDS, or disparity of treatment toward those AIDS patients, or bias in favor of the non-ille employee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dorfick?
Employee benefits division, primary goal is to provide health insurance, to protect you for insurance cost expenses you may incur for a treatment of various illnesses. Illnesses related to the AIDS are treated the same way as any other illness. This is what we have been told by insurance companies. They don't make any differentiation. Your physician submits a claim to the insurance company, and they're going to pay as a medical case for the treatment which is medically necessary, as any other claim. We don't differentiate, we don't see the claims, we don't, uh, you know. It's completely confidential. Therefore, I think that's, you could be caught about it.
Thank you. Reverend South?
Just want to say that I appreciate very much on the part of Aid Atlanta, the city taking this step. Uh, you may not know that, um, Atlanta is one of the first, if not the first, city in the country to do this kind of program. Um, the city council, back last October, contracted with Aid Atlanta to provide this training for all city employees. There are 8,000 city employees, I'm told, and, um, trying to reach 8,000 people with an educational effort has been a tremendous cooperative effort from the mayor's office, um, through training, through Frank's office, and, uh, through, um, the community relations people, and it's been a tremendous-